On the, on the International Space Station can tap in if they want. So it's, uh, it's gone, it's gone worldwide.
I'm sure they wouldn't miss it.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so, so I think we're about, I think that's about it, you know, uh, do you have headsets on?
Uh, no, but I'm, I'm isolated here in a room, so I can hear you just fine.
Okay, oh, cool, okay, you sound great, you sound good. What do you think, Manu?
Uh, yes, and so I'm logging in on the antenna site right now.
Okay. So this is going to go out right now live, uh, to our radio station in San Jose, and it'll also be livestreamed, and it's also being translated.
Yeah, Aaron over there in Chicago, uh...
In Chicago, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's, uh, he's the one that's, um, doing the translation. And he doesn't know, uh, when that record, this recording will, uh, be put on the cloud so we could air it in Spanish on the radio.
Yeah.
So on, so...
But pretty quickly, though.
Uh, hope so, yeah. Let me go there. Yeah, there we go, it's live, and I just gotta turn the music off, and put it on pause. It was a COVID update, you know, the one you sent me, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
All right, so... All right, so it's airing live over there, so I'm gonna stop talking, uh, and...
Yeah.
I'm just going to basically just give you the, what we usually do is the station ID, and then soon after, go at it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, here we go.
Okay.
You're listening to KCXU LP ninety-two point seven FM on your dial in San Jose, California.
Welcome to our one-hour program that we are calling the Weekly COVID-nineteen Town Hall Meeting with Dave Cortese, County of Santa Clara Supervisor for District Three on KCXU LP ninety-two point seven FM. My name is Bill Conrad, and I will be your moderator for today's radio town hall meeting. Listeners interested in hearing a livestream of this town hall on their computers should go to the following site, kcxucovidnineteen.org, and then just click on Radio Town Hall Live. Listeners interested in asking questions of Dave should call or text the number below or email their question to the email address below. The, the caller text number is four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six. That's four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six. And the email address is covidnineteen@kcxu.org. That's covidnineteen@kcxu.org. We will be simultaneously translating the town hall meeting into Spanish for later rebroadcasts on our community radio station. The translated show will also be available at kcxucovidnineteen.org. KCXU LP ninety-two point seven FM radio is a community radio station in San Jose, California, that amplifies the diverse voices of San Jose, providing local opportunities to tell stories, share experiences, and strengthen people's lives within the community. Today, we're going to interview Dave Cortese. Prior to joining the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, where he has served for over a decade with four years as Board President, Dave Cortese served eight years on the San, San Jose City Council, including two years as Vice Mayor, and as a trustee for the Eastside Union High School District for eight years. Dave's lifelong dedication to his community has translated to a diligent record of public service. Welcome to the show, Dave. We're so glad that you could take time from your busy schedule to leave this radio town hall meeting tonight. You are playing an important role in adapting our democracy to a brand-new world by hosting this great communication initiative for our community. Can you give us the latest update on the COVID-nineteen pandemic with this Santa Clara County day?
Yes, and, uh, thank you very, very much for having me. Thank you for doing this. This is, uh, in and of itself, uh, a, a, a public service, a great public service, and media of all types, particularly electronic media, you know, have just done a tremendous job of getting the word out, of educating the public, informing the public, and, and creating opportunities for questions and answers and, and give and take, because, uh, this, this has required enormous sacrifice and cooperation and collaboration, and it's, it's really the two million people, particularly here, when I focus on my jurisdiction in Santa Clara County, two million people here for the one saving lives by, uh, complying with, uh, the orders that have come out from the Public Health Officer over the past few weeks, um, and, uh, sometimes just using common sense and doing the right thing. So, um, I appreciate it, and, uh, I am just very fortunate, um, and honored to be in a position where, uh, I have a little extra something I can do once in a while as member of the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors to, uh, to help things along in the, in the right direction. Um, things have been going well here in one regard, and that is that we feel, uh, especially by comparison, uh, that we're doing what we sought out to do here when the Public Health Official asked us to all shelter in place. What we wanted to do was, uh, to slow down and, and sort of even out the rate of infection so that it wouldn't overwhelm our hospital system. Um, and it, you know, that part has worked. We've, we've been able to maintain adequate members of hospital beds, respirators, um, PPEs, personal protective equipment, has been a little harder to come by, and masks, uh, sanitizer and such are, are things that we've had to depend largely on, uh, philanthropy and donations and just the generous hearts of, of the people who live in this valley. Uh, and that's, of course, happening all over the country, where average citizens or residents have had to step up and, and, and do their part, or at least been asked to do so. Um, and then, of course, um, we have, uh, essential workers who are on the front lines, of frontline healthcare workers who, uh, are really risking their lives, uh, no exaggeration, risking their lives day in and day out, uh, to save the lives of others. And, um, we think that overall effort is working despite the fact that, um, we have had a significant number of, of deaths even in this county and a significant number of infections. Um, we had, uh, over twelve hundred and thirty-two cases, for example, just in the city of San Jose at last count, twenty-two, for example, in Cupertino. And we're not absolutely clear on the mortality rate. Um, some of you may have picked up on more recent news about, about that. Um, although the county has, um, confirmed, the county's confirmed cases, uh, got up to nineteen hundred and twenty-two cases, again, at last count, on the last information I had, uh, that means about ten percent positivity rate of, of all the tests that have been given. Unfortunately, there's only been nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-three tests in a community of, of two million people, um, with another couple hundred test results still pending. So what it doesn't tell us is, as we've had a higher mortality rate in general this year, over last year at this time, you know, you look back at March, March of twenty-twenty, uh, we had about twenty-five percent more deaths in Santa Clara County than we did in March of twenty-nineteen. And that number would, would dwarf, the differential there would dwarf the number of confirmed mortality cases, um, that we tested for. But, um, that work is still going on. The Examiner Coroner is still trying to, to figure out and true up those numbers, and I think the most important thing is, um, that, you know, we're not getting overwhelmed from an ICU standpoint, from the key hospital bed standpoint, um, you know, and our healthcare professionals are, are able to keep up at this point. I think that's the greatest indicator of all.
Well, thanks, Dave. That's a, that's a great intro. I really appreciate that. And we want to remind our listeners that if they'd like to ask questions of you, they can call at four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six, or email us at covidnineteen@kcxu.org. We got one question, Dave, coming in, uh, earlier today, uh, which kind of dovetails with what you were talking about earlier. And this question was anonymous, but it wa, it's, it's pertinent to what you were saying. So, uh, the question is, we learned today that there were two COVID-nineteen deaths in Santa Clara County in early February, making them the earliest fatalities in the United States. Anecdotal evidence also suggests that some of the residents had COVID-like illnesses as early as late fall two thousand nineteen. Are there any plans to identify any more earlier cases, and how will it change our current response?
I don't know if we'll be able to, um, identify any earlier cases for two reasons. There may not have been any. That's reason number one. Reason number two, it depends on whether or not there's, there's anyone still through the coroner examiner, uh, that office, that's a separate office from the Public Health Department, you know, whether or not there's anyone from, prior to February deceased, uh, who they would still test, you know, with a tissue test, or, you know, how they do that empirically to, to confirm that it's a COVID-nineteen case. They might. It, it could happen. I'm, I'm not, I have no reason to believe that's out of the realm of possibility. I think the bigger issue is, from that date on, um, from that early February date that we now know is, or was the first case, at least on record, what happened after that in terms of mortality in the county? Um, right? And, you know, because testing was slow to happen, and, and the caller is wondering, how could that happen, testing? I think if we all remember back as to what was going on, uh, the, the Center for Disease Control hadn't really, um, sanctioned, um, tests and test kits for us to use. Commercial labs had not been authorized to do tests. Uh, we have a small lab in our Public Health Department that can do a, a few tests at a time. Uh, it's really not set up for consumers, for public, uh, consumption, so to speak, or high volume. Uh, so it was a time back then when there were, there were very little tools available to do testing with. Um, but one of the things that I wish would have happened, uh, and, you know, it, it's, as we've scrambled through this, I started to think about it last week, and I did a public records request asking the coroner examiner's office to produce the overall death rate. You know, why don't we just look and see if death had been trending up, if mortality had been trending up? And then maybe we'd want to go back, if it has been, uh, and, and take a look at cause and effect, and, and maybe there were some more COVID cases there. And, you know, I got that information back from my public records request Monday night, uh, the night before last, uh, and it indicated, yes, we've, we've had about a twenty-five percent increase. Now, from January through March, there were, as I recall, over fourteen hundred deaths that the coroner tracked. So if you had a twenty-five percent swing from one year to the next, that's, that's a pretty sizable number. It's, it's somewhere between three and four hundred, uh, deaths more this year than last year, you know, over a three-month period, or another way to look at it, it'd be a hundred more a month, or per month, than what we're used to. So we haven't, we haven't attributed that many deaths to COVID, so we haven't had, you know, a serial killer on the loose. I don't want to be facetious. I'm just stating the facts here. We haven't had a sudden violent spike in crime. Uh, so it's pretty strong circumstantial evidence that we had a lot more going on than maybe we thought.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a good point that you make. So, I mean, a lo, a lot of things point in that direction as, uh, COVID-nineteen being the culprit here. So, you know, the Corona pandemic has had a tremendous impact on all of our lives. How has the pandemic affected your life and your family's life personally, Dave?
Well, I appreciate that question. Um, I mean, other than a few acquaintances that have asked me, you know, on a personal basis, uh, how things are going, and of course, I, like most people, I try to check in with, with my friends and family as much as I can. I appreciate that question. I think the biggest impact has been much like the rest of the community. And, and I don't know if people realize this, but we elected officials, we have to shelter in place also. Um, we're not exempt. We, we're considered essential workers, so I can go out. I can go to my office. I'm expected to go there under certain circumstances. But basically, I'm under the same shelter in place orders as everyone else. So, um, the same thing that other people have found themselves doing, uh, you change your exercise routine, uh, you take walks, uh, you know, instead of, uh, driving places, you, um, find yourself, uh, working from home, uh, an enormous amount of Zoom meetings. Um, you know, we, we just have to use online meetings. The board of supervisors' meetings now are done online. Earlier today, as a member of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, I was on an online meeting with elected officials from all over the Bay Area for about three hours. And, you know, and that's the agency that funnels all of the state and federal transportation dollars, including our highway projects, our bridges and everything, all come through that commission. And, you know, we're doing business on, on laptops. Um, one would say there's something to be learned by that, especially as we go forward and try to figure out how to deal with the climate crisis, which is a, another, another emergency that we're facing. Uh, maybe we ought to be doing more remote work. Maybe we ought to be using laptops for our meetings more. Maybe elected officials shouldn't be jumping into fossil fuel vehicles and traveling all over the Bay Area to get to a common meeting place for a three-hour meeting. Why do we do that? We kind of have to wonder. So I think we're gonna see, um, a lot of these things that have impacted my life and impacted yours may become the new normal or part of our culture in, in the future, because people will just say, you know, it was actually more efficient doing things that way. Uh, maybe I could just keep, keep doing it. And, and, uh, you know, that's small consolation right now, because people are losing their jobs and, and some are even losing their lives, as we were just saying. Um, but, you know, something transformational and good usually comes out of this kind of, of disaster or tragedy.
No, I, I totally agree with that, uh, that assessment, yeah. So things are going to be different, and maybe things will be different for the better, especially as it relates to our climate. So just want to remind our listeners that our call-in number, if you have questions, is four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six. And our email, if you want to email a question, you can email to covidnineteen@kcxu.org. We have another question from Santa Clara, Dave, and that, and this one goes, "Georgia is taking steps towards reopening its economy. Closer to home, Ventura and Riverside County in Southern California are loosening restrictions. What implications does that have for us in Santa Clara County?"
Well, we, uh, that's a great question. First of all, when you talk about loosening restrictions, it depends on what, which restrictions you're talking about loosening up. Uh, for example, I've been a big advocate over the last couple of weeks to try to loosen restrictions on residential construction. As you know, we've been suffering a homelessness crisis and a housing crisis here that a lot of us elected officials have worked very, very hard on over the last few years. And there are projects out there that need to be finished, need to be completed. Some of them are within ninety days of being completed, and housing people, you know, their homes that are just unfinished. Some of them need to, to, um, start, and, and that housing production is crucial right now, uh, will be as the economy gets back to normal, but you, you don't want to hold it up. And, and the question becomes, can you release those construction workers with a new set of protocols, new kind of work culture for them that we can develop in terms of best practices so that they're physically distancing, they're not congregating at lunchtimes, they're not congregating during breaks? You know, they're using PPEs, they're, they're protected, they're using masks, they're using gloves as necessary. Um, they're not parking together, they're not carpooling together. I mean, there's a number of rules that people have now thought up and, and actually tried. You know, we're, we're doing those things with public works projects like highway projects. You know, perhaps we can do them with private sector projects like the construction of homes or some commercial buildings, or even accessory dwelling units, you know, granny units in people's yards that, that people would like to get built. So I think you'll see here some, uh, nuancing or relaxation, or whatever you want to call that, a more detailed thoughtful approach to which industries can open up safely without negatively impacting the workers or the rest of the community. Now, i- it, the rhyme and the reason to that is going to be perplexing for some people, because you would think, if you can open up a great big construction site, why can't you open up the neighborhood restaurant? Well, it's hard to operate a restaurant without congregating people and without having them, uh, in close proximity, whether it's in the kitchen, whether it's, uh, you know, if you just think about walking from the front door, uh, to a restaurant for an hour and a half sojourn in a restaurant at dinner, you're, you're encountering people, um, facilities, you know, restrooms, waiters, waitresses, other... Uh, it's hard to even imagine how to do that, even though it, in and of itself, in and of itself, it's not a complex sort of a business, and it's certainly the kind of business that we would love to have thriving right now. Um, one thing I would add to this is, two things I want to add, is the public health officials in each county separately make their own decision. In the Bay Area, most of the public health officials have made their decisions in unison, but under state law, they don't have to. They could make a different decision in, in every county, depending on the emergency circumstances they're facing in that county in their estimation, nor can they, can they be overridden by the, the governor. So they have tremendous sweeping authority, uh, to make these rules in each county. Uh, what we're trying to do, when I say I'm advocating for this or that, um, they, you know, we're trying to do, use all the tools we have, uh, memoranda, phone calls and everything else to, to try to influence and persuade what it's like out here in the neighborhoods, on the ground, you know, where people need landscapers, uh, where there's certain kind of recreational facilities that we, we think should be opened up. And again, where there's certain kinds of, of work activities that frankly might be set up quite well, you know, even in a pandemic, um, to be, to be very safe. So, uh, our orders expire on May third. That's, uh, not very far off. And I suspect, uh, I do believe that you will see some, you will see a continuation of the shelter in place orders, but they'll be different. And I, I believe that they will, uh, you will start to see some changes, some amendments. Uh, you could call them relaxation, or you could just call them more surgical thoughtful approach to how we go forward from here and start trying to get at least some of our workers back to work.
Yeah, that's interesting, and it, I, I'd like to, you know, take a big picture, look at, at this, the whole system, and the degree to which, you know, governmental agencies need to act in concert to address this crisis in a coordinated way. And you talked about some of the, uh, abilities of the counties to make their own decisions. But from your perspective as the County of Santa Clara Supervisor, what is your vision for the roles that individual governmental agencies from the federal to the state, to the county, to the city levels should interact in ways to address this crisis?
Well, yeah, my perspective is, they should, uh, be aligned as much as possible, federal, state, county, city, um, and, and the states between themselves, Nevada, California, Washington, Oregon, et cetera, should be in alignment as much as possible, and there's logical reasons for that. Um, this, the nature of this particular virus, um, and the disease caused by the virus, which we call COVID-nineteen, is, is so, is dissimilar to anything, certainly in my lifetime. And I'm in my mid-sixties. Uh, most people haven't experienced this. None of the doctors I've talked to, including our public health officials, have ever dealt with anything quite like this. The virus travels around like a ghost. Um, it's undetectable, it's asymptomatic, and a huge percentage of the population has it. But asymptomatic people can spread it, and it's equally contagious between them and between them and others, um, a- a- as, as, as if they were symptomatic. So here we have a huge percentage of the population, estimated at twenty-five percent or more, moving around. Um, but you look at that person, it could be a member of your household, it could be a member of your neighborhood, it could be someone you're jogging by on a jogging path, they have it, you don't. You can't tell. And it's an insidious, ghost-like virus that shows up, um, essentially without, without warning where you least expect it, and there's no test to tell where it's coming from. The contact tracing is what they call that, doesn't really exist, because we don't have enough testing to be able to figure out who's infected in the first place. We don't even have good immunology testing yet, even though, uh, labs are, are working on that very hard, serology testing, so we can't even tell which of the population is immune. And, and it's safe, you know, working in close proximity to somebody else. So while all of that is happening, you know, while we have this, uh, very ghost-like enemy that is so difficult to tackle, because you can't see what you're tackling, um, we, we have to work in alignment with the shelter in place policy as closely as we can uh, with those other jurisdictions, in, including the ones you mentioned that already relaxed some of their worker rules. Why? Well, they relax rules around truck drivers, uh, Uber drivers, uh, uh, other kinds of transports of goods and services, um, restaurants or anything else. And those people travel, you know, across boundaries, then here we are trying to protect people, and all the while, we have travelers coming in and out, people delivering goods in and out, uh, people who are, are, are engaging in contact, you know, well beyond our borders that are bringing the virus back. And, and, and even at our borders, even if you set up test stations, the testing today won't tell you, uh, won't even, you, you can't screen well enough to tell who to even test. You know, early on, they were saying, well, if you have a fever, you know, you should be tested. Of, of course, now they're saying, there's a whole bunch of people, maybe twenty-five percent of the population, that have this virus and can spread it to you or me, who don't have a fever and never had one. So, so how do you screen that in an airport, or at a bus station, or at a UPS, uh, at a UPS delivery center? I, I don't know how you do that, and that's why we have to really, uh, be disciplined and try to be as aligned, as aligned as we can with our, with our neighbors, our, our neighboring cities, counties, and, and, and even states.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, and, you know, this COVID-nineteen is presenting us with some really difficult challenges in terms of how we're going to even detect it, let alone address it. So it's, it's very challenging, as you, as you know, as you know. So we have another, we have another, uh, call coming in, or another question. I want to remind the listeners, though, that they can call in their questions at four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six, or email their questions at covidnineteen@kcxu.org. One of our listeners, um, uh, was asking that they're concerned with the pandemic, of course, and they seem to have, they may have second and third waves. How can we present, prevent that from happening in our county?
Well, right now, given everything I just said about the fact that we can't really anticipate a surge or a second or third wave very well by way of testing, and we can't really prevent it by vaccination, because there is no vaccination, um, and it's, again, very difficult to tell who even has it. Um, so, you know, the, the thing that's working, and not to be redundant or repetitive, is, is shelter in place. In other words, distancing, shelter in place may be, uh, a little bit too, uh, too much of a catch-all. Physical distancing is just this fundamental way to, to slow down, not only slow down the rate of infection, meaning how many people on any given day are getting infected from others, because if you distance, you, you're not likely to get it, to slow it down. Um, the other thing that it does is it keeps you from having a big spike or a big surge. You know, you notice now that we're getting relatively small spikes or surges. Um, you know, they'll, they'll say, we had five new cases, or, you know, twenty new cases in the entire county. Um, but we don't ever really seem to have that run of, you know, seven or ten days where we have a hundred new cases a day anymore. And, and, and that's a result of the distancing that has been essentially forced upon us, you know, by these public health orders. Um, not, again, not to be repetitive, but fundamentally, these public health officers need to, to listen to everyone in the community, including us elected officials, to, to help teach them where we can function as a society and still have distancing. I think that's where we're still swinging, swinging the bat and missing a little bit. Um, you know, and we can't blame the public health officials. They had to scramble, put together orders, and, and, and try to distance us right away for our own good. But now that they've had time, they should be able to go back and say, we can, we can let some people... should be able to go back and say, we can, we can let some people go back to work, and they can still distance while they're at work. And and that takes a little more thought, a little more detail, to say the least, but I think we can do that and still avoid a surge. That's my belief.
Yeah, so, yeah, those are good points, yeah, and testing for COVID nineteen is, as you as you know, is really a key for our community to emerge from this crisis. And based on the, the idea that, um, we can have, can can we begin to think about some scientific sampling as a way to collect information on the prevalence of COVID nineteen within our general population, and even within micropopulations within our community? Can the universities like Stanford help with this, uh, scientific sampling process? So, you know, we're, we don't have as much testing as we need, but maybe we do it in a more parsimonious way through sampling. Uh, and the data from the sampling would reduce the need to test everyone in in Santa Clara, but it would give us a good view as to the distribution of the virus within given population, wh- within a a error of measure, of course.
Um, yes. You know, I I think the one exciting thing that's out there, um, if exciting is not too strong a word, under these circumstances, which are otherwise very troubling, uh, the one exciting, uh, you know, research body of work that's out there right now, uh, is around antibody tests. And, um, you know, the the work that's going on at Stanford, and I think about sixty-five other, you know, research laboratories, uh, around the world, you know, are are is almost a competition at this point to try and develop, um, a serological test, they call it serology, right, that will withstand scrutiny of the Federal Drug Administration, they have to approve it, and once they approve it, um, it can be used on a pretty massive level, like what you're alluding to. I mean, we could theoretically open up Santa Cruz County fairgrounds and set up testing stations, you know, set people up six feet apart with masks on, and put protective gear around, you know, around the technicians, and we could just test people one after another, after another, after another, and start certifying people, you know, and and we could also determine if we're starting to develop herd immunity, you know, which is, uh, as you know, broad, uh, broad community-based immunity to the virus. But right now, despite the fact that there's sixty-five or seventy laboratories and some of the smartest people in the world working on these immunity tests or serology tests, uh, none of them have perfected the test yet, and I think they're getting close, but even when they get close, they're gonna have to get FDA approval, and, uh, we know that'll take at least a little bit of scrutiny and a little bit of time. So, that's why you keep hearing public health officials telling all of us, including me, as the county supervisor, we're gonna be in this, uh, for the long haul. And the problem with that is, if you're in it for the long haul, it means some of these economic consequences that we were talking about earlier, um, are gonna be, are gonna continue to be severe, you know, and and this pandemic-induced recession is is something that we're just gonna unfortunately have to suffer.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's a good, you make some good points there. Uh, and so while many people are are rightfully concerned with the huge economic impact of this Corona epidemic, which you which you know, we should also be concerned with the impact on our democracy. The lifeblood of our democracy is accurate information and facts. How do you think the pandemic has influenced or been influenced by the quality and accuracy of information and facts at multiple levels within our government?
I think it's been hit and miss. I think, you know, there's times when I'll look at, um, some of the information that comes out at a national level, or a state level, or dashboard-type information, charts and graphs that we produce as a county, and I'm really impressed. I mean, I I have to say, overall, I think this county, um, you know, especially the public health folks and and the and the, uh, health and hospital folks have just done a heroic job, and an excellent job of not only saving lives, but producing information for the rest of us. It's it's been, it's been a a really strong effort. But remember that elected officials like your board of supervisors, your mayor, your city council, uh, your your assembly members, your legislators, and your senators, and so forth, the governor himself, ultimately are accountable to the people, and be voted in and out of office oftentimes based on your transparency, because that comes right back to your trustworthiness, your credibility. And if you're not honest and openly transparent, your credibility is, you know, is gonna go down the tubes. So, pub bureaucratic, um, appointees in government have not ordinarily had to live up to that same standard of of transparency. It's not part of their daily ethos, it's not what they do. Uh, they work in more of a research or a, um, a a bureaucratic capacity. They're not engaging directly with the masses of general public with the democracy. They're not even representative, um, elected members of the democracy themselves. So they have a a different, or lesser, or maybe even non-existent standard for transparency. And I say all that because I think that has that fact, um, when you have, that fact has led to far less transparency than we're used to. Um, we're not getting data on which neighborhoods or census tracts have had clusters. At times, we're not even getting that information on homeless encampments or senior care facilities. We don't, we're reading that something happened, but we don't know where. And, you know, I'd have to say, as an elected official for forty-eight years, as an elected official, you'd never get away with that standard. People demand of us that that we be transparent. So, we're pushing, I think all of us are, as elected officials in this county, the whole board of supervisors is really, really pushing hard, uh, to get, you know, the rest of the organization, uh, into a culture of of transparency and sharing information, and not, and not being scared to do so. Uh, there's no reason not holding anything back, just, you're not gonna scare the public, the public is probably about as scared as it's gonna be right now. Give them the information that they need to help navigate, uh, the health of the community going forward. That's my, that's my way of looking at it.
Do you think we'll ever get to the point, Dave, of the granularity where we can report on specific neighborhoods like Willow Glen, or or Little Portugal, or some of the neighborhoods in San Jose? Will we ever get to the point where neighborhoods will be able to get that level of granularity of information to see what's going on within their really local, uh, neighborhoods?
No, I hope so. I think it should be, at least be, it should at least be done by census tract, even if you're not gonna call out, you know, the name of the neighborhood. Um, i- there's a census tract, and, uh, you know, on the federal census map. Though, by the way, make sure, make sure everyone's counted, we're in the middle of the census right now, and that's how we, that's how we get our federal tax money back. But, um, you know, when, you know, when, when the, when the community, the city of San Jose, the county of Santa Clara are mapped out by the census, um, districts are created, and they're pretty granular, and I would at least like to see the data reported that way. Here's what I, here's why. If indeed we need to continue physical distancing because of all the reasons we've discussed this evening, because we don't have a vaccine, we don't have immunology testing that's approved, we don't have, you know, good screening, we don't have universal testing, so they're gonna keep telling us to physically distance, then wouldn't it behoove us to know where the clusters are, so we can physically distance from those areas? Why would anyone wanna keep that a secret, so that so some poor unsuspecting person pulls into, you know, the seven-eleven store, to do some essential business, like get a gallon of milk, um, not knowing that there's been a cluster of, you know, whatever, a dozen or two dozen, uh, infections in that area? I I think that, I think that's at cross purposes. I think that's wrong. I don't think you can have it both ways. Tell us we have to physical distance, and then give us the tools we need and the information we need to to do that, or tell us we don't need to physical distance, and let us walk right into these cluster situations, you know, with a blindfold on, uh, I I I don't get it, and I'm gonna keep pushing for that information.
Well, I, and you know, actually, the World Health Organization has recommended that we need to start seeing a drop in Corona or COVID nineteen cases, and we need to be able to, as you say, to identify those hotspots, and begin to do the, you know, the contact checks and so on and so forth, at a, at a very, uh, tight level, and so that we don't have these explosions occurring. So, y- you know, from the, their recommendation, what you say makes sense.
Yeah, I think you stated it quite well. All of that, at some point, means that somebody in a public entity has that information, right? They know where to go look. They don't have the test, the proper test to do that, yet. They know, they have that information, and I I just have a fundamental aversion to not sharing public information. I think that's why it's called public information, because it's owned by the public, not by a few people sending it to a cubicle somewhere.
Well, let me, uh, let me give out our number again, okay? So people who do wanna call in can have the opportunity, and if you have a question that you'd like to ask of Dave, um, then you can call in at four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six, or you can email your question to covid nineteen at kcxu.org. So, then back to this uh, democracy, uh, idea and value, we've talked a little bit about the economics. You know, to what extent are we seeing, uh, kind of a return to the need for the, like you say, openness and transparency, but also a recognition that we need to support the common good? Uh, a- and i- is the pendulum tilting again towards a me-first orientation, or is it, do you think it's tilting more towards, you know, we've gotta think about the common good of everybody within our community?
I I think it's tilted way back, uh, towards the common good. Um, I don't think fundamentally we ever really lost that, but I think sometimes people get so wrapped up in political partisanship, uh, you know, in fighting these, these, these big political values, that that we, as individuals, start to perhaps over-identify with those political positions, and we tend to group up, you know? We tend to to stick with, you know, birds of a feather will flock together, and and we tend to, uh, maybe mildly ostracize, ostracize, you know, uh, the other groups, and it starts to create divides in our community, and I think we've seen that across the country. Uh, there's even been people that have said that that San Jose is is a tale of two cities, you know? Um, people who are marginalized and and in poverty, um, you know, are are really living an entirely different lifestyle than than people who are, uh, moderate to high income, you know, in this community. So, uh, that creates further divides, it creates further tension, it creates blame sometimes. What I'm proud of most about this experience with this pandemic is the generous heart of this community. Um, I I feel like I'm in, I'm in a crow's nest, looking around at two million people, by and large, um, giving of of their generous hearts, you know, toward their neighbors, to make sure that we all come out of this okay. And, you know, I, it's it's a privilege. It's really a privilege to to live in a community like that, to see that compassion. Um, it it's really about our higher selves, and, um, you know, I'm honored, I'm honored to be an elected official in a community that that behaves this way.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a good point. I think you're seeing the true spirit of the American people, you know, really coming to the fore, and that most Americans, you know, are of the idea that they wanna do the best by their, by themselves and their neighbors, and and will take whatever steps necessary to make that happen. So, so that's a, that's a good point, so. We have a question coming in here, um, and saying that many of us are confused by the need for social distancing, as well as the need to make the incidence of COVID nineteen become flat. Can you help our community better understand how these two ideas work together?
Yeah, I think part of it is because, um, maybe, and and I don't know, you know, in the mind of of the person asking the question, but one of the things that has come up in the past, um, that's alleged of those kind of questions, kinda goes like this. We have two million people in the county, you know, a week ago, we had seventy-five deaths in the entire county, out of two million people. Uh, we have a lot of hospitals, we have a lot of capacity, um, what's the big deal? You know, why do we need to physically distance? And why do we need to try to flatten the curve? What's what's that all about? And 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 here's the little, the little secret, if you will, um, but but I think it's a secret that'll make sense, and that is, in in all of the hospital systems combined, there's normally maybe a couple of hundred hospital beds that are vacant and open for you, for use. And then when we narrow that down to acute hospital beds or ICU beds, it's it's a smaller number. So then you ask yourself the question, well, why would we only have that many hospital beds available in a community of two million people? Well, because it's it's a business model. Um, you can't have a hospital, just like, you know, with with thousands of vacant beds, just like you can't have a movie theater, you know, with hundreds of vacant seats every night, and expect to make, you know, make, make it, make your ends meet. So, so really what happened here is is when the pandemic started to hit home here in Santa Cruz County, the public health official, Sarah Cody, you know, and in conjunction with Valley Medical Center and the other hospitals, they they looked around, including Kaiser and everyone, and they said, we need to create space, and even when we create space, we're not gonna have enough space for a surge. And and what did they base that on? They looked at Wuhan, they looked at Italy, and if you think that's too far away, just look at New York, okay? They looked at metropolitan areas like this that had similar ratios of hospital beds to population, and they saw how they got overrun, and they said, we can't have surges of, like you saw in towns in Italy, where six, seven, eight hundred people need a hospital bed overnight. We we don't have them. So, they came up with, well, why don't we vaccinate everyone? Well, 'cause you don't have a vaccine. Well, what what can we do? Well, we can distance people, because the one way to fight contagion is to stay away from somebody who's contagious. So why don't we just go back to fundamentals and say, wash your hands, you know, shelter in place means don't get around anybody who could possibly be contagious, and and go from there. And, uh, you know, that's, um, that's the plan, and it's, that part's been working, because our hospital beds haven't been overrun.
Yeah, you could see that in the, in the, in the ga- uh, dashboards on the county health department, right?
Yes, absolutely. And and you can see it by comparison. You know, normally, I'd say, don't compare, don't compare yourself to anyone else, and don't compare our community with another community, because it's probably unhealthy to do so. In this case, it is healthy to do so, because it's a, the virus behaves fundamentally the same way wherever it is globally, and at this point, it's everywhere globally. So you can look around and say, let's not do what they did, let's try to do something different, and and avoid that kind of, of 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 a crash, you know, in our, in our public health system. Not to mention the fact that if all those health officials are getting, you're having that kind of overrun, uh, frontline healthcare workers are starting to get sick, uh, and people who are having other ailments, you know, heart problems, stroke, or whatever, uh, they're competing now for for hospital space and, uh, you know, doctors and nurses that that aren't, just aren't available. So, you know, it becomes, it isn't just, there's no way to get a lucky lottery ticket if you're a human being, uh, you know, in in a place that's being overrun by a pandemic, because there's no hospital beds. You're, everyone's at risk, and everyone's a victim at that point.
Yeah. I wanna remind our listeners again that our number, if you have questions, is four zero eight six three nine eight zero eight six, or you can email your questions to covid nineteen at kcxu.org. Along those lines, Dave, you know, the health of our brave and valiant frontline health workers is essential if we're going to defeat this COVID nineteen. Nurses across the county have reported shortages of PPE. It is reported also that some hospital administrators are hoarding PPE equipment in expectation of a surge. There are also reports and information about staff who have become infected with COVID nineteen are not being reported, reported, uh, to them. So what is the county doing to ensure that there is an adequate supply of PPE for our frontline health professionals? How is the county hospital ensuring that there is full disclosure of COVID nineteen infections by staff, of staff, uh, and how are they using precautions to protect the staff?
Well, you know, there's a number of, there's a number of questions here, and there's a number of answers. You know, the the biggest, uh, effort that's gone on to try to bring in PPEs, um, supplies in general, like N ninety-five masks, has been conducted by the Valley Medical Center Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization that's affiliated only with Valley Medical Center, basically. basically. And they raise money all year long to support the neonatal clinic, the, the burn unit, the trauma unit, you know, those parts of the hospital that are difficult to, to, to pay for. And, and they bring in money to do that all year long. So they have been unleashed to, to raise money and to take incoming donations. For example, my office has been lucky enough to be responsible to have referred donations of masks in the thousands. Just recently, we received a donation of 15,000 masks and PPE gowns, gloves, mattresses, all kinds of things. We direct those to that foundation. As far as protecting the frontline health workers, besides that, I mean, obviously the purpose of the foundation is to take those, those masks and those protective, that protective gear and, and use it to protect the frontline health workers. It's one of the reasons Sarah Cody has not asked everyone to wear a mask in this community by mandate. She's asked and she hasn't mandated it because she doesn't want to take masks away from those frontline health workers in a supply and demand situation. As far as protecting the workers themselves, obviously, you know, this is a, a big county, 22,000 employees, half of which are in the healthcare system. So it's a big, big organization of, you know, 10,000 employees. And we hope, I'm not operating on hope. I'm also not a manager of the system. And as an elected official, it's my belief and my hope that from a line command standpoint, that management is, is looking out for the employees, making sure that they're taken care of. But if that's not happening, we have an Office of Labor Standards Enforcement that's a separate entity in the county that people can report those issues to. You have whistleblower hotlines that they can report into. Obviously, the media itself, radio stations like this, you know, will, will report those cases if people come forward. So I think there's checks and balances built in will work and systems that will, complaint-driven systems that will work. But those, those can be overrun too if, if too many people are being mistreated or not being treated properly. And, you know, like I said, I, I believe is that's not the case. I think that the systems are working as well as it can be right now. It doesn't mean it's perfect. It doesn't mean people aren't going to get sick or infected or, or be without a mask at some point when they really need one. Certainly, there, there will be, there will be problems like that from time to time in any big system like this, but everyone's striving to minimize those.
You know, as, as you noted in your, in your previous comments, that the county health department has really done a yeoman effort in, in building that, that dashboard with the great statistics and so on. And one of the things they're reporting on is the long-term health facilities, which is, you know, very admirable in itself with, they're reporting 31 deaths from these facilities. It seems though that there, there may not be enough reporting facilities. Like they said, there was an indication that there was only one long-term healthcare facility reporting. Assisted living facilities were six and the, the board and care facilities were one. So what do you, what do you think needs to be done to make sure that we have a wider representation of long-term healthcare facilities reporting into the county?
Well, from what I've seen, that whole system of accountability needs to be revamped. It needs to be fixed up, so to speak. I, I think many of us have been concerned and suspicious about that for a long time. It's, it's like other, some other industries, whether it's bad actors and good actors, there's people who, who are operating facilities that evidently can't be trusted to comply with the rules, any rules that are applied to them in terms of, you know, fundamental safety and health of, of people that they're taking care of. And it's so vital that they comply now, right? Because you're dealing with a population that fundamentally is in close proximity to each other and is fundamentally among the most vulnerable in the community and susceptible, you know, to serious consequences from this virus. So here they have probably the highest community standard for care. And yet we're seeing failure upon failure with these clusters popping up all over the place, including, you know, in some of the other cities in the East Bay and other parts of, of the Bay Area region. So it's a problem. I, I believe what will happen is you will see the fallout from that in local and state legislation that essentially tightens up the scrutiny on these kind of facilities. Unfortunately, it, it may be a little late, unfortunately, to save some of these victims, you know, of COVID-19. You can't go back and bring somebody back to life, you know, once people have made those mistakes. And that's the tragic part of this.
Yeah, and continuing with the county health department, there, as you said, they're reporting about 88 deaths from COVID-19 in Santa Clara County. And the distribution of deaths is, is, is interesting with African-Americans, 7%, Asians coming in at 31%, Latino, the highest, at 33%, and whites, 27, and others, 15. So what is your take on the distribution of deaths by ethnicity with, with the Asians and Latinos dying from COVID-19 at such a high, relatively high rate?
Well, it's, it's wrong. I mean, we should be concerned about it as a society. My take on it is very, it's, it's a combination of experience and, and it's a little bit anecdotal. I will tell you, I was born and raised in East San Jose. I, I live in the East foothills. Obviously, I'm not driving a lot these days because I'm sheltered in place just like everyone else. But on the, the few occasions where I had to drive as an essential county worker over the past couple of weeks, what you see in the morning is you see people, the east side, where you have a much larger Latino population, a much larger population of, of people of color scurrying around, heading for work. The streets are, are busier. They're not people on a joyride. They're people that are heading to Walmart because that's where they work, or they're heading to Target because that's where they work, or they're heading to Lucky because that's where they work. You know, and, and, or any number of other jobs. So unfortunately, the, the, if you look at the low-wage worker population, there's a big overlap with that population and what we are calling essential workers that are out there feeding the rest of us right now. Those essential workers are disproportionately Latino, African-American, and, and even, you know, some, some aspects of the Asian population. So it's not right and, and you're going to see disproportionate numbers of infection in consequence in that population and, and that's really sad.
Yeah. So we've only got a, a few minutes left, Dave, and, you know, I really appreciate, I think it's been very productive and, and you've given us some great insights from your position, as you say, in the crow's nest, about what's happening in our county. It's been very informative. But is there anything else that you'd like to talk to us about or talk to the audience about as regards to working to address this Corona pandemic within our community?
Well, I would say overall to the public, if I can, if I may, thank you for what you've been doing. As I've said, you know, people could put rules, laws, guidelines out there, but if there's not general public buy-in, especially in this kind of life and death circumstance, it could very well be a much different situation. In fact, I know we would be. So as a neighbor of, of the listeners, as an elected official elected by these listeners on, on the radio station this evening, you know, as somebody who's lived in this valley all my life, as I said earlier, I'm just extremely grateful that there's such a sympathetic, empathetic and compassionate community that we live in and that people are taking precautions oftentimes not to save their own life or protect themselves, but because they're aware that if they slip up and, and, and don't follow the rules, you know, they could really hurt somebody else. And again, let's keep that in mind. Let's try to be disciplined. We're, we're all going to struggle with economic fallout, including government, which depends on things like sales tax revenue from cash registers and property taxes, which will eventually be going down if we have, have this recession for a while. So don't, don't feel like anybody's getting away with anything here. The government wants us to end, at least local government does, as soon as it possibly can. Stick with us and we appreciate it very much.
Oh, that's, that's really, really a great sentiment. I think you're, we're tapping into the greatness of our American population, especially the, the great people that reside in Santa Clara County and that you represent so well in District 3. I don't suppose you're going to prognosticate with us about, you know, a date certain when we can expect to go back to a, you know, an economic normalcy. Yeah, I guess the data will tell us that at some point, hopefully in the future. Do you have any thought, do you have any, it's May, June, or is it just, are you just keeping an open mind about when we're going to?
I, I don't, I don't know. I, I do think you will see a partial reopening, as I said earlier, of certain jobs and industries, but it'll be very partial. And it won't necessarily be the number one thing on, on your list or some other listener's list, you know? Football, football and basketball and baseball, you know, I missed, you know, the A's and the Yankees a few weeks ago. I had tickets, you know? Only get to go once or twice a year.
Exactly.
You know, I, that's high on my list ordinarily, but right now, it's, it's got to be low on our list because that would be a disaster, of course.
Yeah.
And I just don't know when that's going to happen. But I will say this, on the day that you're able to report on this radio station that there is a serology test, an immunity test that's been approved by the FDA, where we can test people's immunity with accuracy, it's at that point that we'll be on the downhill side of this and we'll be headed home. But until that, until that happens, I think we're kind of stuck in this position.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Dave, for sharing the great work that you and your team are doing to support our community in addressing the horrible Corona pandemic. This radio town hall meetings are a great step forward in communicating with our community in Santa Clara. Take care and stay safe. We'd like to specifically thank some of the members of your staff who have been so helpful in organizing this first town hall meeting, including Tara Sri Krishnan and T. Nguyen. We would like to thank our partners from Interphonet for simultaneously translating this town hall meeting into Spanish. Specifically, we'd like to thank Gabriel Hogan, Carol Bernard, and Evan Fitzpatrick. A big thanks to KCXU LP 92.7 and Chief Executive Officer Manu Martinez. Listeners who'd like to comment on the radio town hall meeting can visit our KCXU 92.7 website at kcxu.org. You can also find the English file for this town meeting as well as the Spanish translation at kcxucovid19.org. Also, look for live broadcast of the town hall meeting in Spanish throughout the week. Our next radio town hall meeting with Dave Cortese will be next Wednesday, April 29th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on KCXU LP 92.7 FM, as well as live streamed on kcxucovid19.org. We hope that you can participate in all of our Wednesday radio town hall meetings with Dave Cortese. Thank you for listening. This is Bill Conrad signing off at KCXU LP 92.7.
You're listening to KCXU LP 92.7 FM on your dial in San Jose, California.